All right, everyone, I'd kind of like to get us started here. I'm Michael Smith, I'm the Chair of the Prudential Committee. And I think the first thing we want to do is to have each of the Board Chairs call their boards to order. So I've got a quorum of the Prudential Committee, so I'd like to call the PC to order. Jack?
I'm Jack Balindorff, Chairman of U-46, and we have a quorum of U-46 Board Members here, so we'll call our board meeting to order.
And Mark Drouba, Chair of Westford, I'd like to call our meeting to order.
And Kim Gleason, Chair of Essex Town, and we have a quorum, and we will call our meeting to order as well.
And first thing we'd like to do is to give an opportunity for any comments from the public of any topic that's not on the agenda. All right, hearing none. Kim, would you like to take a couple moments and... What are we going to talk about here?
Absolutely. Mark, do we have an opportunity to open the PowerPoint presentation? Thank you. And do we have the copies of sort of a working agenda? We had the warned agenda for this broader topic, but we thought putting a little more shape to it with all of us might help guide us through productive conversation. So I thought what we would do, and we had the opportunity, Michael and Judy and Mark and I, to get together last week and think about how we wanted to share the conversation and what we were looking to do. And we're here together to look at the possibility on whether or not we're interested in studying a consolidated pre-K through 12 district. Not whether or not we will, but whether or not we're interested in studying that. So in that vein, I thought we would take a look at some of our commonalities, that the amazing work of the Heart and Soul brought to light over the last two years, the values that our communities share in Essex Junction and Essex Town specifically. But that greatest value that we shared together was around education. And so, Mark, do you mind clicking ahead? We, as a community, share education, and what that meant to the folks that were responding to these surveys and years, two years' worth of work in seeking out our common values, was that we most highly valued diverse options for kids and quality. And these are some of the other categories that are represented there. So we're in a place where we have a lot of commonality around what we value as communities, and this is our strongest value. So it makes sense to be having this conversation. Mark, can you move it one more for me? And then I said, let's take a look at our vision and what we value in terms of each of our districts, and again, found a lot of commonality. So as we look at the Vision in Chittenden Central, a student-centered learning community maximized available resources through collaborative leadership to consistently recognize as exemplary and measured by continuous improvement in areas of achievement, safe and respectful learning environments, promotion of equity for all. In Essex Town, we have a mission in our district to provide a quality education to all children to ensure success in a rapidly changing world. And our vision is to create a student-centered learning model in all three schools where the transfer of learning is the constant and organizational structures and processes remain flexible and adaptable. We share in our policies this notion that we are looking to provide opportunities for kids to be prepared for the next stages of their lives at a cost our communities can bear. And that is explicitly stated in our policies and is scattered throughout all of your policies. So it's, I was looking to see our areas of commonality and invite us to think about the question of whether or not we would study a different structure to support those, that missions differently or perhaps better. And wanted us to take a little bit of time, if we could, maybe, maybe just five minutes, just turn around and speak with our neighbors, but around some specific questions. Mark, maybe can we put up the agenda?
I think they're rolling on the hand up, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we may not have the agenda to pop up there. Do we have the working agenda to put up?
We could, it might, it might take some time.
Okay, but if that's, we can just, yeah, can you click to the next one for us?
Sure.
This was the ends policy I was just speaking to, where it's pretty explicit what we're looking to do around outcomes for kids. And like I said, it shows up in many places and shapes and ways in your policies as well. Again, finding our commonalities to figure out if we can look at what we do around structure to support doing any of this differently or better on behalf of kids and our taxpayers. So as we are looking at this notion of whether or not to study, I think, Mark, if we can...
We have a technology glitch, can't find the end.
Can't find the, oh, the end policy isn't there. Okay, that's okay.
Yeah.
So I've got it, but I'm sorry, folks. It's basically what I said, so. But if we can put the agenda back up, Mark, the working agenda, if you can find that.
See if I can, yeah.
I'm good. You guys all have it in front of you, and even probably most of our audience.
I think we had a couple extra copies that were passed out.
I think we got a chance to share them. So we can stick that back up there, but I thought we could go around and all 20 of us can share our thoughts on this, or we might cluster around a few of us speaking together, and then one person from that cluster kind of reporting out. We're mixed up among our boards, and that's probably great, too. So let's maybe speak in groups of three or four and see if we can answer these questions. So if, what do we, just so that we can take a stab at framing our conversation, what, one, what do we as board members and trustees of our schools value most about our current educational systems? Two, what opportunities exist in operating a pre-K through 12 unified system? And three, what concerns does it raise for you? So just as we're having these conversations, we don't need to answer each of those specifically, but let's let that frame our thinking if we could, and see if we can't get to some info that we'd like to share with each other. And then we can also allow individuals to share their thoughts, but it might get us thinking a little more deeply about stuff. We could take maybe five minutes?
Great.
And chat amongst ourselves?
Hope you guys, you can do the same thing.
Yeah, definitely, because we'll be inviting you to share your thoughts a little bit later.
Okay, everyone, let's move forward a little bit. I know you guys had a chance to talk about these, using these three questions as kind of framing your discussion. And so what we'd like to do is bring back the discussion to the whole group and let us know what came about in your discussion groups. And I'm going to start over on my left-hand side with the group over there. Trying to see what came out of your discussion. Anybody want to talk?
I'm happy to, I'm sort of sick of hearing me, but. Okay. We shared among ourselves, we've got two of us from Westford, a high school and a town, townie girl. And we shared the value around school and high school choice especially in the Westford community, having opportunities to find the high school that fit best for kids, so that's an important value in their community. We spoke a little bit about also the opportunities to possibly expand student offerings in potentially all of our schools, and minimally to maintain current offerings and opportunities which could become challenging in the face of budgetary constraints otherwise. Providing some sort of consistency in terms of, from the high school perspective, as students are coming in, some level of consistency around what they've had and coming into the school community. A question around how much additional collaboration could be happening that maybe isn't now with or without a red or a unified district. The opportunity to share among professional colleagues, so teacher teams and professional learning communities, might exist where in smaller communities, they're, you know, by virtue of the size of the classes, you may not have as many teachers to share their own best practice around improving opportunities for kids. And making sure that if that were important, that that would be something that would be consistent across all schools. And I think those are most of our comments. You guys can hop in, or we can share our thoughts later. I think we wanted to imagine an experience that's about the journey of the student, pre-K through 12, and that in the face of things like personal learning plans that go seven through 12, ensuring that we're establishing those goals with kids and for kids that are consistent with what we have across the offerings.
Thank you. Was the next group basically you four here? Who would like to speak out of that group? Everybody's staring at Erin, so.
That's what they told me over here, too, so.
So for question number one, we indicated all of the opportunities that we feel are offered to our students in our district, the richness of the programs, and the diversity of opportunity. We mentioned things like, you know, that our teachers and the variety of what, of the principals, but I think a lot of it is a really strong feeling that there's really a great, the programming is really excellent. Number two, we were talking about this, I guess this is kind of my term, but the power of one, consistency that could be gained. And we also really thought about the high school, and we thought about cohesiveness, easing of the high school transition, potential concerns. We talked about the worry of potentially losing some value programs or opportunities. And then there was the question that was raised about the recreation departments, kind of how would that work? Would that be consolidated? Just something to think about.
Okay. Thank you. Tim and I talked.
He doesn't normally get a chance, that's good.
Right. So one of the things that we want to come out of this is, you know, we could show that we can run the schools more efficiently, and there's cost savings and tax savings, and that does need to be part of the conversation. And again, echoing something else that was said both groups, that currently there are a lot of opportunities within our schools, and, you know, will there be, will there be more? And we started going off on a tangent of thinking about, you know, wow, there's other things that we could try. We could, you know, rotate, you know, have looping between eighth and ninth grade for teachers and, you know, maybe look at how our schools are structured and as far as focuses and, you know, kinds of things like that. Anyway, so that's just, you know, there are, there would be other opportunities that may come about. And one of our concerns was, you know, that those folks that are afraid of change, holding us back from actually making a change. Those are the things we came up with. The next group here, who would like to speak?
Go ahead.
I hear Mark all the time, does anybody else want to talk?
Perhaps we can all.
Yeah, I'll chime in.
So I'll give, I'll give kind of a perspective on what we value, and with Westford being a single-building, pre-K through eight district, we do enjoy a great deal of the continuity that helps make it a very safe and friendly learning environment for students. The transitions that I think can be troubling for children when they're, when they're moving between buildings or peer groups are largely erased because of the structure we enjoy right now. And how can we, how can we keep that continuity? How can we extend it, maybe to offer additional opportunities to, say, our middle school students who, because of our situation and size, don't have the newest science labs, don't have industrial arts, don't have, you know, different types of classes that a larger school may enjoy? So kind of preserving what's good about our experience, but then recognizing that an extension might be required to really serve our students. Oh, there's one chiming in.
And then I think we also, you know, again, discussed a little bit about the continuity. I mean, that was, that was a part of our conversation, and also looking at it as not just a pre-K 12, but because of CTE, to think of it as a pre-K adult, so really that we're taking it a larger viewpoint than just through to the 12th grade. But looking at the continuity, looking at what we value is also ensuring the opportunities and how even within the different frameworks of where our buildings are located, where Westford might have great, you know, opportunities for kids in terms of outdoor learning experiences. You know, each school might have its gifts, but maybe there's better ways that we can share those gifts and extend the opportunities for all our kids.
And continuity, again, with curriculum, too, just to have that transition work better for everybody, so.
An opportunity that I think we recognize is that in a school where we employ a fair number of part-time teachers and staff, we need to be able to attract and retain that talent. And it becomes increasingly difficult to train an individual just to see them leave within several years, because we cannot offer more than a half-time position due to our size.
No?
Move on, we'll keep moving, I'm missing a...
Sure. We came up with a few thoughts, two of us from the town and one from Westford. I won't harp too much on the continuity thing, I think we've heard that one already, but also the, just the idea of creating consistency in our currently, our parallel programs, so that kids really have comparable opportunities, and not that they don't, I think each one, each district offers some very good opportunities. One of the positives that we could see is, sort of in those extremes, the super gifted kids, the kids who are very challenged, would we be able to bring in greater resources to expand those ends of the spectrum? I think the majority of our children do extremely well in our schools, they have a lot of opportunities, but in some of the more, in some of the smaller, unusual opportunities, would we be able to be, offer something even richer than what they have now? Our concerns, certainly there's a concern, what would this mean for our transportation issues? You know, with the junction, the town have very different transportation needs. Westford is a whole nother thing there. So that was, without getting into the details of it, that's obviously a concern, let's just say that. Also a concern from the Westford perspective of making sure their voice is heard, just by pure numbers, I mean, you know, you're smaller, but that doesn't mean the voice isn't just as important. And so how do we structure it? And I think that even gets into a whole governance question, we all do things a little differently. It'll be kind of neat to see how we can all come together and say, what's great about how you do it, what's great about how we do it? Okay, can we bring those together?
I think that covers the things that were, that we talked about.
Yeah.
Ditto what everyone else has said, and I'm sure the two of you will chime in. Marla, you look like you have something you want to say.
Yeah, I have, you said something very valuable about Westford. Your relationship between your school and your town in Westford is very important to your community.
Yeah.
And I think in Essex Junction, just as the rec department is valuable to our community, and I'm sure our town of Essex has things that are valuable to you, but that stood out when you mentioned relationship. But the other concern, as things stay the way it is, having Scott in our group was interesting because he explained that they have cut everything in Westford that can be cut. You've got classroom teachers, you've got part-time specialists, so where do you go if the budgets keep getting squeezed? That was...
Choice, and then, I'd rather be an advocate for choice, it's a, it's an appealing thing about Westford choice.
High school choice.
High school choice, yes.
But I think we hit upon everything that's up there. But the only thing I would add to that, that I mentioned to them, is I think it's deceptive to think that if you are a larger district, that you will not have a voice. I find in Essex Junction, by having the three or four schools, the PTOs and PTOs, PTA's are very strong. I think they're the voice, and we hear it at board level if they're unhappy with the way things are going in their school. So I think sometimes those fears, the fear of change that holds us back, we have to remember the positive, but that's my personal.
Anything else over there? Good? Okay. Well, what we'd like to do is, we're going to also invite comments from you folks here. But before we do that, we wanted to move into, just talk about Act 153 a little bit, which is also part of this conversation, and invite some of your comments also to include some of that topic, okay?
Can I add something?
Yes.
The thing I didn't hear here was, the last time we went through this, I think we all went forward because, it was like, well, it's logical, we should, we should discuss this. But I think even from the boards, it never had support. It was dead from the day we started it. We really have to take stock in ourselves, whether we're going to support this, whether the community supports it, because otherwise we're just wasting a lot of time and money. You know, I think we really need to take, you know, a poll of our communities and saying, you know, does this have any chance at all? If it doesn't, then, you know, there's a lot of fear out there, I think, to the change. And I, I just think that we're, we all agree that we should be reviewing this, but to do it formally, and if we knew our community don't support this, we're wasting our time, we're wasting money, and we don't have a lot of either, right? But we also need to make sure we don't sell this on saving money. Here, I think the state, the way they're looking at this, is this is a way to save money. Money that we save is really, it's a one-time savings. I know it's every year, if there is savings, but it's only going to save us from this cliff, this financial cliff we're all worried about, that, you know, taxes are going faster, higher than our grand list, or income. This isn't going to save that. And we have to make sure everybody understands that. This is not the solution to our school funding problems. This may save a little money upfront, but it's not the answer to our school funding issues. And I think we need to make it clear to everybody, because if we sell it that way, I think we're going to have problems later on. I didn't hear any discussion about that, because I keep hearing from the state, this is all about a financial thing, and this is not the answer to our financial problems for funding. So it's, we need to sell it for other reasons.
Thank you.
We definitely, when we spoke about this at our table, Dave, as our board, we also came around somewhat full circle and said, boy, with money being available to study, we would almost need to defend why we wouldn't look to see if there are opportunities to our communities. So if, if 10 people came and said, we don't think you should do this at all, we bear responsibility to our entire community for outcomes for kids as well as at a cost our community can bear. So we did totally go right around on that idea of whether or not we would study. And we came to a place where we felt as though we have the good fortune, I think largely in Chittenden County, and I say this having spent the day in a summit around the Green Mountain Imperative with Martha and maybe others who are here, to study opportunities in education for kids and governance and finance changes that can support that better. And so, having had lots of those conversations over the last year, it seems to lend itself to the fact that we need to consider all options, and we, this probably needs to be one of them as trustees of our communities on behalf of education. So that was definitely a place. But I think also equally importantly is, we in our, both of, all of our communities enjoy really good quality education and offer a lot of opportunities for our kids. And we are not the profile that you hear in your averages at the state regarding class size or even cost per pupil. It isn't that, but what we struggle a little bit with is maybe what Westford was sharing in that we're kind of operating in margins that we can't affect much around the cost of our tax burden in our community. We have large class sizes, and, you know, we have, in some ways, skeletal administrations, and we're doing what we can in terms of opportunities for kids. So the statewide conversation, we aren't those numbers, but I think we may have opportunities to revisit this conversation in an environment that's different than eight years ago, with the work that was identified in the shared values across our communities through the Heart and Soul. It does feel different to me, so.
And I hope it does, I'm not saying we shouldn't.
No, 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 but I, we had exactly that question.
When it came out of the board, we didn't support ourselves, so it was, it was dead from date.
And I think that's part of why I wanted us to begin the conversation around, why would we consider this? It's not going to necessarily be the money as much, and there may be opportunities down the road for that, and it, we may realize opportunities for cost savings tomorrow. But in our successful communities, before you would disrupt things dramatically, you want to think about why, what, what could we envision that might be different and provide greater opportunities? And some of what's come down are things we have to do, like professional learning plans and other such initiatives, you know, really lend themselves to that continuum around the journey of the student, and considering what might be in our way with respect to structure, or how can we better support things from a systems standpoint? So, but we totally had exactly that conversation, like, do we even study? And we finally came to, wow, we'd have to have a really strong defense for not studying at this point, with the support of the state to do the study. Not to necessarily, and that's, we're not talking here about whether or not we'll unify or merge, we're just talking about whether or not we'll study.
I agree, we should be studying every few years, right? If we didn't do it, it's something we should always keep in mind, too, but it's cost money to do it. And here's the incentive here, the states will want to help fund that.
Thank you, because we, it wasn't raised, but it totally was a conversation we had to.
Great. Was there any other...
I just think, is it what, how you started with saying, if we're selling it to the community, and I think that opens the conversation about when the community gets involved and what we're asking of our community. And I think that's a really important thing to have in our minds as we go through it. Right now, the question is to study it or not. The question might be more about how we involve our community in, not, that's not the question for the community, whether we study it or not. And so the question is how to bring the community in for getting a sense of what they most, what the people we serve care most about, and how to bring them into this conversation. It's, I don't think it's a selling. I think it's, I think for what we're doing right now, to agree to study this is a separate question from selling the community a product that we all think we want them to buy.
But I don't agree with that completely. I think as you're studying it, the community's asking questions, and your responses to those questions are going to be whether you're selling it or not, whether you believe in it or not. And if we don't believe in it, we're wasting our time, I think.
But believing in the study is different from believing in...
Right, believing in the need to, right, to be open to, open to the possibility, this is good for us. But I don't even think, last time we came out of that, I think we all came out and said, yeah, we need to do this, but I don't really want it.
Yeah.
And we can't come across that way, otherwise.
Great.
We're wasting, you know.
Well, I think, too, what you're saying is the tax incentive is great, but it is short-lived, and if we continue on with this study, our focus needs to be the students and the high-quality education that we provide, and we can't lose sight of that.
I think you identified, too, Dave, I mean, I think the biggest problem of the last seven or eight years ago when the study happened is, I'm not sure that people felt engaged before the study results were available, and it felt as though everything was pointing to certain outcomes, at least that is ending up how it felt at that time in our community. And so I think there, we learn things each time you go around on any one of these ideas, and we, I think, want to take those lessons and structure things a little differently. So we feel as though we're in fact asking for engagement and input rather than just informing after the fact. I think that the study will be more, have more credibility and have more support of whatever the outcome might be. whatever the outcome might be. But that's, I think we'll have the opportunity, hopefully Sue will be willing to share with us a little at the end, some ideas around how we do that in a meaningful way, if we should decide that we are voting to in fact study. Sue's agreed, I'm not putting her terribly on the spot, we had a conversation, and she's agreed to chat with us at the end of this meeting before we wrap up.
But still, I'm saying, the study, you know, you can find a study on subjects done two different ways with two different outcomes.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, that's how the study was done, how the questions were asked. So that really goes back to, when we go to this study, how we ask questions, how we engage the community, how that's done is really gonna, I think, have some influence on whether the community buys this or not. So again, it's, you know, I hate to say, it's a selling job. It's really, do we believe this is something we really need to look at carefully, and careful how we, I don't wanna say it's selling, but, you know, it's gonna save money. Well, possibly, but that's not why, the only reason why we wanna do this, and make sure they understand that, because if we say, oh yeah, it's gonna save money, you know, people are gonna hook onto that right away, and, you know.
But there are things that are happening in our community today. We talk about the good work that Heart and Soul has done. I mean, we're sitting in a new building right now that shares the values of what our community thinks. Our, the village trustees and the town municipal managements, they're working together here. I kinda see starting and engaging a conversation about educational excellence and coming together is a natural extension of other things that are already happening in our community. And it's a great time for us to consider the things that are going on, because we have something tangible we're sitting in right now that shows what our communities are doing together. You know, we talked to our, like I said, our municipal leaders, the leadership that we're sharing between the town and the village, you know, leadership there, that's happening. And this is a great time to say, let's take a look, and how does that, how do those initiatives leverage themselves into something that will continue our educational excellence of where we are?
Yeah.
Andre?
One thing that's bothered me is we seem to be focusing, this may save money, it may not, but I keep thinking, and the question still is in my mind, what has changed since the last study? Major thing that has changed is declining enrollment and its impact. But we're not diving into the reasons why the study failed, or the unification failed last time. What has changed since then? Has representation been more equitable? Has, that was a big piece as well. I mean, so rather than ask what, where we go, maybe if you look at what has changed, and what are we trying to present? Are we gonna in essence roll out a very similar model to what happened in '07?
David, I think we're way too early to talk about what we're gonna roll out, and I think your point about, well, what's changed? I think that's one of the questions this study needs to answer. No, because, I don't know. And I'll be honest with you, I moved here ten years ago, so the last time this came around, I was so new to this place, I was like, what? We're not part of the same community, really? I mean, I was new to the area at that point, and so I think that's the exact topic, that one of the most important topics this study would need to look at, is what was then, what is now? How are those different? How are they the same?
No, but I think my point is, is that if we engage in the study, the governance structure, has that changed? Then what governance structure presented in '07, would that in essence have to be presented again? Because if that has not changed, that's an important aspect, and that's what I'm trying to focus, and I don't think the study is gonna provide that. I think the information prior to the study needs to be dwelled out, teased out.
Mike? I think if you went into your next agenda item on your PowerPoint, it will have some things as to how the study might be different this time. I think we're putting the cart before the horse, and we gotta move on.
We can bring that up.
I think Mark or Judy was gonna maybe take us through sort of the high-level, what the study would be potentially, and then some of even those details around the questions or articles you need to have in a study would be something that would come once we would decide to study or not to study. And then I think we have some technical folks who are gonna join us after to share answers to probably some of those more technical questions. Mark or Judy?
Hi, everybody, I'm Mark Andrews, I'm superintendent in Essex Town, nice to be with everyone. And the only time I ever see is I got asked before Judy did. So I will certainly expect to invite that she be a part of a very brief sort of overview of the basic tenants. Andre, we're not gonna get into the changes, the changes, there's a lot of information about what has changed since 2007, but we're gonna run you through a slides that actually Michael and the Prudential Committee put together as a means to sort of educate boards in your SU about the red and Act 153. So we've taken from that and sort of integrated into this very brief presentation. We do have a couple of invited guests that are more expert in helping us think more deeply about Act 153 and what it might mean for us here in central land in Essex Town. So Ali Kimberly's gonna flip to slide four or five, I don't know, it says Act 153. So this was a piece of legislation in 2010, it was one of Armando Villaseca, former Commissioner of Education, last sort of swan song, if you will, and getting the legislature to understand the importance of consolidation. Consolidation, as you know, and you've been through this presentation, has been around in the nation since at least the late 60s. As more rural schools in our nation, we're starting to see enrollment decline, and maybe consolidating is gonna provide more of an opportunity for children. So in Vermont, it's been a really important conversation as we have dropped in our student enrollment over time, but it did come to be in 2010, in 2012, I believe, Act 156 provided some amendments to 153 which incentivized it for school boards. And again, I'm gonna be brief, because you've seen this content, but what Prudential Committee had identified as three salient features of 153, which the General Assembly supports, is number one, which you've talked very eloquently about this evening, that in fact it may provide increased educational opportunities for students, because of the breadth of curriculum, the breadth of student services, the opportunity to access transportation, being able to look at controlling student enrollment, all those are opportunities that live within 153 or the spirit of it. There are potential to increase economies of scale, and increased tax base, for example. It may provide more access to quality professional services across multiple schools. Specialized services, our demographics are shifting in Chittenden County, especially in Essex, in the town and in the junction. I can't really speak to Westford, I apologize, but we're serving a different type of student and their families. We know, for instance, that mental health has been cut dramatically at the federal level, and we're serving the kids now with acute mental health issues that we've never had to serve before. So looking at a pre-case system where we can share those resources, we think may have an effect on the economy of it. And finally, the cost efficiencies. We are two very distinct organizations, and we are duplicating services in many ways. And so it doesn't take too long to realize that there might be a more efficient way to do it if there were bridges that tied our organizations together. So those were well-done, Michael, with your group, and I think a good place to start the conversation. And again, Judy, chime in here, and at any time.
Great, Mark.
So again, we have two experts in the audience who'll be introduced shortly in terms of, you know, the specifics under the hood, what does 153 offer? But there are some tax incentives, at least for the first four years, and someone mentioned, maybe it was Gary, that this, it's four years, and is it sustainable over time? But there is an eight cents, a six cents, a four cents, and a two cents impact on our taxes lowering it by that amount over the next four years, and that certainly is a reason to study it, at least initially. There are some transition, there are some dollars to get the study, to launch it off the ground, and again, I won't, we can talk about that later this evening, but it may not hold our communities completely harmless in terms of cost, but we feel that the resource is sizable enough that we might be able to do the study without a cost to the community. Hypothetically, if it were voted to merge, there's another slug of money that comes in, quite sizable, up to $300,000, that would allow that merger to happen. So again, that's, those are the specifics that others can share later on. But there is also technical assistance, so we have people at the Agency of Ed who would avail themselves to us, to work with us, to look at the ins and outs of the dynamic that exists. Culture does, you know, trump strategy, as we've said before, and so we do have to take the time, David, to look at the culture that exists, the history, the stories that people have to share, and make sure that we are cognizant of what's happened heretofore, and honor the voice of all. And we need to make sure that we take the time to do that. But technically speaking, people are there to help us. And finally, we've hit on a little bit tonight, the governance structure is an interesting issue, especially in Vermont. I bet you thought as well, Dan, when you moved here, what's this governance structure all about? You have an incorporated district, you have a union buy, you have a union board, and you have a single district in Westford, and then there's Essex Town. So that's really interesting. And not that it was an easy feat in Chittenees, but they had one set of policies, they had one central office, they had like-minded boards who were sending all their kids to one union high school. Not an easy trip in the park, but I think in some ways, this is a little bit more dynamic in terms of how do you merge two distinct organizations. So the governance structure clearly would have to look different. And to me, I think that's an exciting conversation to have, because I think it does, all good change happens within policy. And finally, this is the last slide, we have several other slides about the engagement piece, but I'll end here and then turn it back to Michael. What I understand in talking to Judy is that the effective date, in order to be, to access those bigger dollars, we'd have to have this voted on or accepted by July 1st, 2017. So not urgent, but urgent enough.
Well, actually, it has to be formed by form.
Form, yeah.
So it needs to be voted on before.
Thanks. So that was brief, Michael, but thought that that, because you've seen the presentation, or didn't wanna get too deep into it?
Question, how, between being formed and being voted on, what time period is, do you think that's, you know, do we have vote on in November to be formed by July, or do we vote on it in March? And so, are we voting on this next fall, or are we voting on this following March, or, you know?
I think we get some assistance for those questions.
Right, that's the answer now, that's the question that has the answer.
Right.
How much of a rush are we in? We wanna avoid that, I don't, we wanna be in a rush. I think people will get scared that, oh, we're pushing this, you know? Two years would be nice. I mean, do people, you know, get a chance to ask questions?
And I think, too, I mean, we may, and Mark may know better than we, whether, if we were to vote that we were interested in a study and be in the study, we may come to find out that incentives wouldn't evaporate July 1, 2017, or, you know, as the legislature goes into session, as you come out of statewide conversations, lots of them over the last year around the topic of education, finance, equity, and opportunity, that those conversations are happening and have been very robust over the last year. And some of the work that's happening in these two days is likely to inform some of the work that will happen in the legislature in the coming spring. So I don't know if we would know for sure just yet what the absolute timeline would be. If that is our endpoint, we'd probably back into certain times that would be required to have votes. But we would also be presuming something of the outcome of the study that I'm not sure that we're in a position to be able to do right now. I think it's important to know what those endpoints are if we were to go that route, but I don't wanna presume that we know the outcome of the study, that we haven't even begun.
No, no, I agree.
And that is where we wanna sort of be careful.
We wanna know what the timetable is, right? Do we have to have this decided by July 1st or March 1st?
Yeah, that's a really good question.
So what I'd like to do is, I promise the audience will have a chance to speak, and is to take a couple minutes for the folks out here to express any comments or concerns based on, you know, the three questions that we have put out earlier, and then as well as, you know, what you've seen with Act 153, and, you know, what kinds of things do you want the boards to keep in mind as we move forward?
My name's Leslie Damon, I'm a resident of the town, and I was a member of the previous unification committee. And I have to say, you know, looking, first off, how many of the people on the boards actually remember what was proposed and voted on seven years ago? So, about 50/50, roughly. So kind of to me, the first thing is, before moving forward, we really do need to look at what happened last time, because what happened last time went down to a solid defeat in all three communities. It's not like it passed in one or two, or it was even particularly close. It went down solidly in all three communities. The list that you all spent your time generating today is pretty much the exact same list that was the starting point seven years ago. There are a lot of third rails when it comes to talking educational policy in our three communities. Westford, high school, school choice, the fact of this school being the heart of the community in Westford, and the fears that that generates when you start combining Westford with the town and the junction and proportional representation. It's really scary to think that the heart of your community might be at risk through the whims of two other towns that really don't know what they're doing in regards to your town. From the town and the junction point of view, what's it gonna do to our tax rate? If you talk equity of opportunity of all the students and equity across the staffs, well, the Westford teachers, at least back then, were paid less. So our tax money is now going to give wage increases to Westford teachers. The junction, you can't bus some kids and not other kids, that says the junction now gets busing. That's a third rail when you come to the junction. With the junction, you've got the issue of the rec department being all part of the school. In the town, it's not. None of these things have changed. Maybe Westford's a little bit more willing to look at some of these issues because the finances have gotten worse since seven years as the student count took a nap. Maybe some of the changes in the town and the junction have affected it. But what has really changed? And what have we done as the three boards in the last seven years to address some of these issues? What is preventing the current three boards from working together to get curricular commonality? What has been done by the three boards working together to ensure smoother transitions from the K to eight schools into the high school? Can we honestly say? I mean, I've kind of lost track over the few years for personal reasons, but as far as I know, there hasn't been substantial movement in any of these things, and neither are under control without a merger.
That's not true. There has been substantial.
There has been? Fair enough. As I said, I've kind of lost track. But it's not been clear to the community, because I have been watching from an offhanded sense. So if it's been happening, it's not getting shared out enough. Seven years ago, we started the process, well, it was actually, what, eight and a half years ago that we started the process? And we're doing it because the state was going to force us into it. That's why we did the study, because the state was gonna force us to merge. No, we're not. Okay, well, is the state gonna force us this time? Maybe, maybe not, but you know, it sounds to me like we're starting the exact same process that we started those few, many years ago, for very much the same reasons, with very much many of the same hurdles. And so I think it really does behoove the boards to take a good careful look at what the structure came down to, why the structure that was proposed came down to what was proposed, and is it really different, and how can the community be made, you know, to agree that this is the right way to go? I mean, with the public works in Essex Town and Junction, well, what did we say? Well, it's gonna cost more in the short term, and then there'll be some modest cost savings later. I fully suspect if we re-study the issue, we'll get very much that same result from the school system, which is what we came up with seven years ago. There's a cost to consolidation, after you consolidate, you'll get some centralized savings, but not a lot. It's not gonna be enough to settle. It's not going to be enough to settle. So therefore, the communities have to become convinced for other reasons.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, the three of us talked.
Oh, thank you, Greg.
We had two business managers from each entity and a teacher from Essex Town. We talked about some of the things that are already happening as far as being able to work together and some of the professional development opportunities that exist. And, you know, the fact that Roger and I work together all the time. Our fear was though, that it's not formalized. And before Roger and I got here, our predecessors didn't talk all that much. And yeah, we can work together, we can collaborate, but if the structure isn't formalized, I worry that some of those things are tenuous and could fall apart. So I think that's one of the things we were thinking of, the strength of merging in some fashion, unifying in some fashion to a single K-12 district would formalize that relationship so that we wouldn't have to worry, is it going to happen next year? Are we going to be able to have teachers get together next year? Or what if there's different superintendents? What if there's different curriculum directors? You know, so that was one of our things that we talked a lot about. And of course, Roger and I get buried into the numbers as you would expect us to, but, you know, the four years of tax incentives, a lot of the things that we think about is that buys you four years for the statewide system to make some improvements, because as we've talked, it's not really us that's broken. We have the right sizes, we are pretty efficient, but, you know, it would be nice if the rest of the state could catch up to that. And if we had a single K-12 system, maybe that would get some more traction among the rest of the supervisory unions or districts in the state. So we talked about those things. I do think there would be some savings, not at the schoolhouse level, you know, at the supervisory union or the central office level. Roger and I were debating the different methods we could try, like coin flips or.
I prefer straws.
Yeah, I think straws. You wouldn't need two of us, but, you know. We also thought about, you know, there's other efficiencies that we would certainly see. I just look at some of the inefficiencies of what we deal with in the supervisory union. You know, if we want to share staff, I either have to treat that person as two employees with two W-2s and two paychecks, or we put them in one district and then I have to write a check from one district to another district to pay for that. So, I mean, there's a lot of that kind of stuff that makes you crazy just within the SU structure. So I do think there's a lot to be gained from it just from an efficiency standpoint, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that the collaboration is not just a business thing, it's a teacher thing. I think it would be nice to formalize some of that so that we're not just hoping that relationships stay good. There's, I think a lot has changed, even in the eight year that I've been here. I mean, there's a lot more open-mindedness to have conversations, and I love that, and I would love to be able to capitalize on that. So that's a long answer for a short question, so.
Oh, that's a great answer. You cover topics that nobody else covers, so thank you. Anyone else? Well, should we have Chris and Brian give a song and dance show for all the.
I'll sing, Brian. Do the dancing.
Actually, I'd be happy, please, to produce opportunities. Yes, Chris Leopold is the attorney that supports both of our districts on several occasions. He has worked for many years with our negotiations with teacher contracts and support staff, as well as a plethora of other issues. So it's a pleasure to welcome somebody who's steeped in the law, who can answer those kinds of technical questions. And joining him is Brian Reagan, who was actually one of the facilitators in the previous study that began in 2005, in February of 2005, and goes 2007. And he can speak to that process and what we have gained and learned from that as well. And so I'd love to welcome you to thank him for being here tonight. Maybe if they could sit up, it might be helpful.
I'd love to be my chair, Brian, of course. So I volunteered to Brian that I would be the one to break the bad news, that we don't have a formal presentation, we have no PowerPoints. We thought we were really here primarily to answer questions, but we'll start with some brief comments. So in terms of process, Title 16 provides that the various boards approve a study. When they do that, they, one, make a determination about how much money is going to be appropriated for the purposes of the study, and then how many people are going to serve on the study committee. State law also provides that the study committee is based on proportional representation based on students within the districts that intend to participate in the study. So that's allocated across the districts that are participating in the study. At least one board member from each community participating in the study needs to participate, and then a board may designate other individuals as community members to participate. Andre asked the question, so what's changed since the last study? There's a couple of things that have changed. The first is, when the last study was done, the really only focal point for that study could be, are we going to form a unified union district? There weren't any other options on the table. There's now at least one other option on the table that can be considered. The unified union school district, really, or unified union district now, really, in some parlance over in Montpelier, is called a regional education district. That's under Act 153. And then subsequently, the legislature has modified the statutes to really, to permit the creation of a school district along the lines of what's happened in Chittin and East, your neighbor. And that's essentially creating a modified union school district. And that's essentially created when four or more districts are making a decision about whether or not to merge and form a unified union. And they decide as an option that if one of us votes no, but a majority of us vote yes, then we're going to create a modified union district. It's particularly appropriate, I think, here, as in Chittin and East, to talk about it in the context that you have a union high school district. And, you know, you can't undo the union high school district very easily. So it's not very easy to talk about Chittin and, I mean, Essex Town, for example, potentially voting yes, but Essex Junction voting no, it could divide the union high school district. And MUDS came about, Modified Unions came about, as a result of several votes in some parts of the state where a majority of the districts voted yes, but one or more districts voted no. But they weren't able to do anything because they were married to a union high school district. So that's one thing that's changed, is the legislature has created another option for you. Question came up about timelines, and if you looked at July 1, 2017 as the date that's set in stone, that you'd have to form by that point in time and make the assumption that the legislature isn't going to continue the incentives beyond that date. You know, I think as a practical matter, when you back all of the timelines back that are associated with voting, I think as a practical matter, it really means that the latest you can vote is November 2016. A vote any later than that is really problematic. And I'll just give two examples. The first is that state statutes provide that no less than essentially 45 days, no more than 60, after you form one of these unified unions or you form a modified unified union, the first organizational meeting of that district has to take place. And that first organizational meeting is a meeting of all the voters, just like the high school has a meeting of all of its voters for its annual meeting. And if you look at Chittin and East, they voted on November 4th. They now have planned their first organizational meeting in December. And after they have that organizational meeting, then their school board has to get together for its first meeting. And then, oh, by the way, they've got to vote a budget to present to the voters and then go to the voters with that. That's all assuming that, you know, one of the communities doesn't decide to reconsider its vote, and the process is delayed even further. So I think as a practical matter, really, November 1 is probably the latest that you can vote. I think there's a couple of communities that I know of that have looked at a timeline of voting on town meeting day and then having it go into effect on July 1 of that year. And that's really not practical. I tell you that that's almost a prescription for disaster. The components of a study committee report, usually they consist of the following, and some of these now are, they've been prescribed by statute, but the other thing that there now is, is a template from the Agency of Education, which for the most part is useful. There's some things in it that are not useful, but the components are typically a preamble, a statement of how and why did we start to study this? What have we looked at? And in a narrative form to talk about our conclusions and our visions for what might happen. The articles themselves are to, one, identify the districts that are deemed necessary, and then if any districts are deemed advisable. A necessary district is a district that's been identified, that if this district votes no, we don't go forward. An advisable district is, we'd like to have them in, but if they vote no or decide not to vote, that's okay too. We'll still go ahead. The second major article is to talk about the grades that are going to be involved in the configuration of the new district. And in the majority of these REDs or the proposals to form a unified union, they've been pre-K through 12. There are then a series of articles that really delineate what's the composition of the board. How many board members per district? How are their terms going to be elected? Provisions regarding proportionality and how you adjust the proportion of the members on the board. According to the latest census, there are a couple of ways to identify representation on the board. The most popular and predominant method throughout the state of Vermont is straight proportional representation based on population within the various communities. The next area that is identified in the report is to look at the property and debts of the various districts. What do you do with surpluses? What do you do with deficits? And what do we do with all the property that the various districts own? It's usually much more problematic when you're forming a unified district or a union school district and you need to build facilities. When you already have facilities, it's a relatively straightforward issue, and the vast majority of entities that have entered into these studies have essentially provided something to the effect of each district that's identified as necessary will transfer their property to the new district for $1. The other provisions that are frequently dealt with are school closures. The RED statute provides that no school can be closed for a period of four years unless the voters of that specific community vote to close the school. Some REDs have provisions to extend that period of time beyond the four years. There's also articles that deal with your labor contracts and staff, how the school's going to be staffed, whether you're recognizing your existing master agreements. And then the effective dates. When does this take effect? Most of the study committee reports that have been done over the last 10 years also have a period of time where the new district is operating and the, quote, "old districts are continuing to operate." And the report deals with those timeframes. There are some studies, study committees that have come together and they conclude that a unified district shouldn't be formed. And that's a legitimate outcome of one of these study reports. Orleans Southwest conducted a study this past year, and their committee concluded after studying it, that given some structural issues that they have with the governance of their supervisory union, which is fairly unusual, that they could not overcome those structural barriers and made a decision not to proceed further. So that's happened. It's not a foregone conclusion that a study committee will conclude and make a decision that we should vote on these articles. So those are the essential components of a report and some of the considerations that go into it. Brian?
Yeah, I think Chris has done a nice, kind of walking through the detail. The only thing I would add is just acknowledging that the curriculum was another part of that, that set of articles, in terms of how that's going to be managed, in terms of what will be different or what will be the same, but how will that be coordinated? So I think an important piece to acknowledge. You know, other than what Chris has already shared, you know, a couple of things that I would just acknowledge is, one, there were some significant issues when the communities addressed this topic in 2004, 2007. And you got through some of the significant issues in terms of the indebtedness and making agreement about that, the issues around staffing and the collective bargaining agreements that were in play. What you also had was an acknowledgement, one of the issues that I recall was, one of the ones that folks struggled with, was if Westford did not choose to vote in the affirmative with that vote at the time, there was specific language in the articles of agreement that Westford would be assigned to a supervisory union outside of what was being formed as a RED between the junction and the town. And as Chris has said, that has been addressed now with the new legislation. So, you know, to me, obviously, the heavy lifting work is on the shoulders of the community in terms of, does it make sense? And just to reiterate Chris's point about, it's not unreasonable to expect that a study committee may come to the conclusion that the formation of a RED or a modified union district is not the desired way. And having facilitated one supervisory union with 16, 17 members on that, that while I think the SU, and this is Chittin and South, that the membership of that community largely was in favor of going to a RED, the issue was that they resolved that the communities were not ready for that vote at the time. So the conclusion of the. So they, the conclusion of the committee was not to bring it to the community for a vote. But in the course of the time that people started this working committee and finished their work and tackled the issues that, uh, seemed to be some of the more challenging ones, people did their homework and came back and made the conclusions that they made as a committee and, uh, at, at the time felt that, um, it was well within their purview to make that decision rather than going through the expense. And the amount of time it was going to take for probably committee members and others to be the ones educating, um, the public, because there's a lot of issues, some of them that have been raised here tonight. So, um, it, uh, yeah, I, I think again, uh, to your comments, Andre, earlier in terms of what's different, what's, what's improved. I think it's seven years later. It's, it's been a newer topic. There are newer things going on in, uh, in the landscape of public education in Vermont. There are cost issues and I think, uh, still on the table and sometimes difficult to be able to provide a compelling argument is what's the benefit for children? Whether they're elementary and primary level kids or high school kids? And is there more to be gained by investing in educational programs and ensuring that those programs are happening with a level of quality that, um, can maybe be a greater investment rather than the governance structure itself? And I think that that's, uh, another side to some of the issues that people contend with as they're going through this process.
Questions?
Are there any?
Got a quick question for you, Chris. Before, when this study committee happened, uh, if I remember correctly, in the old study committee, Westford had a half a vote. They could have two people, but half a vote. Do we have to stick to that? You mentioned there's other ways besides the population of students?
Well, with the study committee, there aren't. With the study committee, the study committee itself is a little rigid, um, unfortunately. In terms of governance, if, if, uh, if you're voting on a red, um, or a unified district, there are, there are several different ways to structure a board. The, the easiest way is the way that it was done, um, in your last report. And that's to say, you know, Westford gets two votes, um, Essex Town gets four, Essex Junction gets four, whatever the exact numbers are proportionately. A second way to do it is on the basis of making a decision that you're going to have two, two and two, for example, but the directors are getting elected at large. And, um, you know, uh, you have, um, Essex Junction doesn't vote directors. Essex Junction, Westford and Essex Town vote directors. And, uh, that's been done with several union school districts in the state. And it's an appropriate, from a constitutional perspective, it's an appropriate way, um, to ensure proportional, uh, representation. Alternately, you also, uh, can have a system where you decide that you're going to elect seven directors. And those seven directors are elected at large, period. And it depends on who decides to file. You could have seven directors, um, from, uh, from Westford, um, who file and one from Essex and one from Essex Junction. And the seven people that get elected are from Westford because they're terrific, outstanding individuals. So there's three basic ways to elect people on the board itself. Unfortunately, with the study committee, the legislature has a fairly rigid, um, framework for the formation of the study committee.
For the study committee, but, uh, the study committee, when they study that, for instance, they all, I'm going to call it the old study. What always bothered me is Westford had two people that could vote, but it was a half a vote per person. And I find with being in the SU, the three votes that Westford has, the Union Forty-Sixth Board and Prudential Committee, I don't know why, but we've always managed very well to resolve even our financial issues, like even tonight. We, I think we always put the student first. I think we're all like-minded. I think this community is the same, the town of Essex. So I think for Westford's sake, um, I think it's easier when you're a board member on a board if you've got other colleagues representing a district. Because I think then you get across what your community wants, so.
So the, the other way to do it that I left out, and, and really, there aren't very many, um, entities in the state that do it this way is to have weighted voting. And, um, you know, weighted voting is a little bit like the other systems. But, you know, you could conclude that, that Westford has three votes, Essex has four, Essex Junction has four. Or you could have a total of nine, three, three and three. But essentially the votes are weighted so that you end up weighting the vote in favor of proportional representation. So the, the, the constitutional standard, yeah, that, that's true across the country and, and, um, it, I won't go into the history of it in terms of Vermont. There is a history of Vermont in terms of union school districts. But constitutionally, you're required that the representatives are in proportion to the populations that they represent in, in the three communities in this instance.
Now, the, the other thing, um, you touched upon, let's say town of Essex. I mean, to do a red district, honestly, it really needs to at least involve, I think, the town of Essex, Essex Junction. Cause our kids are all hundred percent going to the Union High School. Let's say Westford decides not to vote, um, to go in with us. I had heard that they could, um, also buy services. They don't have to become part of the SU. Because to me, there's not much sense going forward if we're going to have more boards. The object of this is to get efficiencies and have one board. So I personally don't want to go forward unless we can do it, uh, with them. If they vote no, then they could, um, get, buy services.
So they wouldn't have to buy services. Essentially, um, the, the idea of a modified union. And, and it's being tried out next door. And I, and I don't mean that in a bad way. It sounds like, like I do, I don't. What I mean by tried out is our statutes aren't as crystal clear as they could be about exactly how that works. But in Chittenden East, all the districts in that community, except for one, voted to form the unified union. They provided in their report that if a majority vote yes, we go ahead and we form the modified union. So they have a modified union. They have one district who's not a part of the modified union. That district is going to be part of the SU. And so the disadvantage of the modified union is you have the modified union. Let's say in this case Essex Town and Essex Junction form the modified union. You have the modified union, you then would have S, uh, Westford. And then separately, the supervisory union would continue to exist. So on one level, you don't achieve the same level of governance, savings or efficiencies that you might otherwise achieve. But at the same time, you still have the benefits of forming the unified union. Nor have you divided the supervisory union and cast another district adrift and said, you're on your own. You're stuck out there.
I believe that was an option last time. We, the committee did make an explicit decision that it was not desired by either the Westford side or the town junction side, that if Westford should vote against, that it wasn't a good choice for anything to end up in a supervisory union situation because it avoided a lot of the gains that would have happened from forming a district. That was an explicit decision last time.
It wasn't an option last time?
It was an option.
It was not, no, it was not. You had the option last time of Essex Junction, Essex Town saying, we're going to proceed alone.
Oh, I thought, I thought we explicitly made a decision not, Brian, am I misremembering?
To not include Westford.
That if Westford voted against, that we could have chosen to maintain a supervisory union with a K-12 plus Westford.
The, uh, the article read that if the, uh, because at the time, the, the State Board of Education can make the decision as to where the landing place is for a community. And the, the vote here with this Article Twelve, if I'm reading, and I pulled this off from the files that I had in terms of a final document, that, um, within six months, if there, um, if the board chose to, to assign, uh, Westford to the supervisory union, which does not include the supervise, which does not include the, the unified union district, um, that the unified union district would not occur. It would be dissolved.
But they would have no vote because there's not a supervisory union in that circumstance.
Right.
Martha?
I understand, I just asked this question today. I understand that in Chittenden East, they're going to have one board. And it will meet sometimes as an ESU board and sometimes as a modified red board. So there really will just be one board meeting in different ways. And then Huntington will have its own board for K through four. So they've gone from, who knows how many boards, lots, to two.
So they still technically will have three boards. They still technically have the Union Board, they have the Supervisory Union Board, and they have, um, uh, the Huntington Board. In part, the separation between the two depends in, uh, on one level, what Huntington decides to do uh, in terms of who they elect to be on the Supervisory Union Board, um, and exactly how that works. But yes, that's their intent right now is that, that the Union Board, um, those members are going to be the same members on the Supervisory Union Board. You're correct. Scott?
Thank you. Um, just backing up, I just want to look at process and protocol. Each district board will make a motion and vote on whether we want to engage in a study. Study committees formed, say we all vote yes, study committees formed, uh, the study committee does their work. They have a proposal. Do they put that in front of the voters or does it come back to the local board to decide if it goes in front of the voters or not in front of the voters?
Good lawyer answer would be to say it depends. I'll be a little more, I'll be a little more straightforward. The, the, the short answer is that if all the districts are deemed necessary, the school boards have no discretion. The study committee has no legal authority to warn the issue, okay? And the, let me, they have no legal authority to warn the issue. Under state statute, they do have the legal authority to require you to warn. So once they issue their report, once the Secretary of Education reviews it and then once the State Board of Education approves the report, at that point, under state law, each district that's deemed necessary is required to warn the vote. If you're a district that is deemed advisable in the report, then the board, the school board, makes the decision whether or not to warn.
And the committee does the deeming?
The committee does the deeming, that's correct. The committee and the State Board, I mean, the State Board has to approve the report as well.
And we don't.
But the advisable, it's the committee that decides.
It's the committee designation.
Who makes up the committee and who determines who's on the committee?
So, uh, the committee is determined, um, the number of people on the committee is determined essentially by the folks in this room. If you vote to go forward with a study committee, at that point Essex Town makes the determination who their representatives will be, the Essex Town School Board. Likewise with the Prudential Committee and likewise with the Westford Town School Board. Martha?
So I have a question about cost. We, as we've started these conversations, we've been talking about the state money that's available to fund a study. Last time, we had to go to the community to get approval to spend money on the study. But this time it feels like maybe we don't have to do that. What, what are your thoughts about that?
My understanding is, is that fundamentally, unless you're going to have what I, I guess I would consider excessive study costs, you have the ability to, to fundamentally have the agency, the state, fund your study committee costs. And there's not, uh, um, the burden on local taxpayers by going to them and asking them to approve twenty-five thousand dollars or thirty-five thousand dollars to, to study, uh, the issue. And, you know, my recollection is I think you, as a group, asked your voters last time to approve, uh, around a hundred thousand dollars, um, for that study. It might have been slightly in excess of that.
Is it true that we'd only get forty thousand from the state though?
Forty, yes.
Is it forty? So we'd be going to ask possibly for sixty?
It, it really depends on what your, the, what the, what your, you know, you determine your study costs are going to be, um, et cetera. I mean, I, I, I think each community or set of communities that look at this are unique. There are some committees that have looked at these in the last several years where it's the first time anybody has looked at these issues in those communities in fifteen or twenty years. There's others where they have, there's been an active engagement over time. Or in your instance, Addison Northwest is another where they've, they've actually voted on it before. And that doesn't mean you, you roll out the last study and you just put new dates on it. But it isn't the same as starting from square one in terms of we've never talked about these issues at all and we've never studied them. And, you know, I think a significant amount of your costs last time were associated with consultants that were studying these issues in your communities for the first time, um, relative to, um, uh, various issues. So it, I, I think it depends on, on, on how you approach, uh, how you approach it. I don't know whether you have a, a different sense.
No, I would agree with that. And I think the biggest focus, uh, the last time was on the financial analysis, both with operations as well as, uh, analysis of debt and how that was going to be redone and, uh, getting it explained to the point that at least the committee was comfortable with the language that they put in the articles that dealt with the, the indebtedness as well as the operational expenses. There was a lot of work that Roger Derby, uh, put in for that analysis.
And teacher contract? And teacher contract?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I, I guess I just don't remember this. So, um, the U Forty-Sixth Board has no selection or staffing of the, placing of the committee members. Is that correct?
If, it, no, if, I didn't. If you're looking to form a unified union, U Forty-Sixth has no role in the process. The town school districts, um, and the incorporated school districts are the participants in the study. If you were looking at forming something different, uh, other than a unified district, um, you know, for example, U Forty-Sixth was looking at, um, forming a union school district with Westford, then U Forty-Sixth has a role. But, um, if the legal result of what you're studying would result in the dissolution of U Forty-Sixth, which it would, um, they're not a part of the study.
Doesn't the legal effect of a red have a dissolution of all the boards?
It does. The difference is, is that the idea, um, with a union school district is they are already an entity of its, um, member districts. They're a creature of their member districts and the member districts. and the member districts should be able to make the determination about what happens.
One of the ways, Brian, that Chittenden South addressed that in terms of CBU and its representation was have representatives from those member districts who also have the board members at CBU. So there was a voice represented from the high school.
So, just to clarify, in our last, second to last, either each board will make the motion, that means Essex Town, Essex Town, and Westford not the supervisory?
Correct. So it's three votes, three votes. Yeah, U forty-six, there's three votes that are passed. Martha?
So, I think all of us are, are working through the concept of, of what it, what requirements we have personally to justify a study. But I think more importantly, I'm thinking of it in the converse way, what, what, how do I justify not doing a study? And one piece of this that I'm still trying to wrap my head around is, a lot of this is predicated on the fact that the structure we currently have in place at the state level is not going to change. We're assuming that the, the laws that govern us will not be changing during this time period. And I think it's quite possible that they will. I'd like to hear your perspectives on what we may be facing in the next few years as the landscape shifts underneath us, and how that could affect us if we're in progress on such an endeavor.
Crystal.
I was thinking crystal ball.
I mean, this is going to open a lot of conversations, right?
Well, you know, seven months ago, the legislature debated whether or not to make this mandatory, in motion, a mechanism to require you to, to do this with some state oversight that essentially managed the process to ensure that it was logical and that individual districts weren't left out in isolation. And if it didn't happen, then in five years to authorize another entity to draw this up and, and, and make it happen. I would not be surprised to see something like that happen in the next two years, Mark, depending on how Montpelier perceives what's happening with, with education restructuring relative to this issue. Several of, of you earlier mentioned during your discussions and your sharing around the room, the issue that the problem's not us, the problem's elsewhere. And, you know, to some extent, some of the people elsewhere, I do work elsewhere, some of the people elsewhere think that the problem is Chittenden County. It really depends on what part of the problem, you know, folks are focusing on at any point in time. But I think that type of, of approach may be something that happens. And I think that the districts that are not involved in this process or engaged in this process may, may find themselves being forced into something else. I don't see the, the legislature doing something dramatically in terms of governance other than that personally. I think that's a, a pretty radical idea, but it had significant support in the House. And I just don't think the, the Senate really spent enough time looking at it actively. I think that, you know, if, if some of the people in the room have talked about money being the driver, I don't think that, you know, when you look at what's happening with the state economy, I don't think that there's, there may be some flexibility to try to do something that people think is more equitable in terms of state funding, but the state doesn't have the money to put in another hundred million dollars to try to, to ease this problem and make it fair in that context. And so I think what the legislature's going to be looking at is how can they deal with those issues without money, and how can they, they force what they believe will create cost savings and, and some cost shiftings that address their concerns. So, you know, my perspective is I think that, that communities, I think ought to be, to be studying this. And, and you can study it from the context of, of looking at consolidation or merger, but I think in that process, you're not just looking at governance, I think you're looking at the totality of how you provide education among your various communities. And I think that's probably the most proactive way that you can address your interests in a way that to some extent might insulate you from changes coming in from Montpelier.
Chris, just a quick question, piggybacking on Mark's. If the legislature were to revisit H eight eighty-three or whatever, and if that were to move forward, then we could have a, a local representative maybe insert some language that would hold us harmless if we were in the midst of a study? Would that be possible?
So it, you know, if they did eight eighty-three, I mean, eight eighty-three was intended fundamentally to encourage communities to do what you're talking about doing. So that their first approach was to try to see that done on a voluntary basis. And the only real caveat that they had to that was that if you did something on a voluntary basis, the idea was, is that the State Board was actually going to begin to look at this, not from a context of gee, Essex, Essex Town and Westford have all done this, this sounds like a good idea, yes, let's go with it. But also begin to look at it in the context, okay, these communities, three communities have said, that's a great idea, and that's really nice, but where does that leave the rest of Chittenden County? And that question's never been asked when they've looked at mergers in the past. Under H eight eighty-three, they're going to start to, if that ever came about, they'd start to look at that issue. Because the purpose of it, one part of it was to make sure that you wouldn't end up in a scenario, for example, where all of the communities in Chittenden County were becoming part of Reds, except for Westford. And Westford was left out in the cold. And in Lemoyle County, they were all forming Reds, and in Franklin County, they were all forming Reds. And there you had Westford all by itself. And there's some areas in the state where that's a real possibility of it happening, if for no other reason than just geography. So that, that's the biggest safety valve that they put into the, into the law. Grant?
I have a question. For us to be able to take a vote on whether or not we approve entering into a study, we also need to be prepared tonight to indicate what the committee looks like and how much money we're looking for to do this?
It should be, you want to be able to, you need to deal with the money about the, the authorization for it.
And that is a joint-
Money, potentially money as well as the, the size of the committee. It doesn't mean, Kim, that you can't take a vote relative to establishing your interests in this, and then come back and determine how many members are you going to have and what, the amount of money involved, and then at that point have each of the boards approve that in that context.
And that could be done in our independent board meetings?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we could essentially vote either up or down on whether or not we're studying, charge Judy and Mark to pursue the available funds from the state for the study, and then make a determination around the committee?
And then report, they could report back to you each individually and say, here's, here's what we found, we're recommending, you know, for example, that you need forty-eight thousand dollars to pay consultants, and we'd recommend a study committee consisting of eighteen people.
And then that could be done independently?
And then that could be the basis of the formal vote, correct?
Sure. I was under the impression that we were not going to be taking any action tonight, but merely discussion. I see that the agenda reflects an action item. Last board meeting we had, I was under the impression it was to agree to joint meeting with all the boards involved, but I was not under the impression that we would actually be voting on something.
I think in the planning with Kim and, and Mark, I just found so well, they were looking to see if they may possibly be ready. So whether we were ready or not, we warned it so that you could take actions, but if action is not required, if you're not ready to take action. But we wanted to give you the benefit of the doubt. So if you were ready to vote tonight, terrific. If not, that's fine to-
So the virtual board should elect not to take action?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so Chris, that would be fine as well in that we're not, I'm just trying to figure out if-
So you can vote whether or not to form it. You still have to, you know, you have to, if you don't do it tonight, you're going to have to separately determine how much money do you want, and how many members? Right?
Right. So my question was, if, if we are, is there value in us voting if we're not all voting tonight, or, or not? I think maybe that's-
We're just meeting together, we're all separate boards.
Understood, and I think the expectation would-
And when we're done, if, if one board wants to be done with it, and we want to vote, then we could be done with it.
So Kim, it frequently, I mean, it frequently is done in the state in the context of, of boards meeting on different nights and taking that vote. It's that there's not a requirement that stipulates that, you know, you have to have this-
Right, but if no, if one board's not going to do it, then is it wise, no one to vote? You know, if Westford says, I don't want to vote tonight, is there really any reason for any of us to vote tonight? I mean, what's the game, what's the game there? Maybe, I'm asking a question, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we've already determined that our full and complete action's going to take place at our separate boards, because we don't have the composition number yet, and we don't have the estimated cost. So we're guaranteed to be doing this at our local board meetings, because we need that information. But the value of voting tonight or having, having a consensus, a show of position, is that I think it puts each one of us out there to show our position. Now, are we going to be, where are we going with our board? I could be, you know, I could be convinced otherwise, but I feel prepared in my position of a board to put my position on the table and have it be public.
And I'm, when?
I, I do not feel comfortable leaving tonight without voting on whether to do a study or not, because I don't think it's fair to go back and ask Mark and Judy to do this work if we're not intent on studying it. So I say we go ahead with a vote, because I'm not going to ask Judy and Grant, and I don't know how you feel with Mark, whether you would ask him, but I'm not going to ask them to do this work if we haven't voted yes.
And I don't want us to forget that we had an opportunity to have Sue share with us some ideas around what community engagement might look like. And if we were done with our technical questions, maybe we can have Sue, Sue share, and then determine with all of that information if we're in a position to feel comfortable taking a vote as our independent boards. And that'd be one less thing on an agenda for the next meeting when we meet individually, because I'm sure our agendas are full. Just a thought.
I'm good with that.
Are there any other technical questions for Brian or Chris? I'm sure they're going to hang around, but I'm wondering if Sue would be willing to join us.
I'd be happy to.
Mark, do you have a couple?
Yeah, we're, we lost contact.
So just by way of quick introduction, I'm sure most folks know Sue McCormick, who along with Liz, had guided our communities through the work of the heart and soul, and have extensive experience in doing an incredible job around community engagement. And so, thinking about this meeting and how we could be productive and effective, and have things maybe evolve differently to exactly the first point, like what's different, you know, there are some things that are different around the way we've engaged our communities, and how can we harness what we know has worked well, in maybe a more condensed timeframe, because we may not have two years for this, but to learn from that and apply it to this situation. So Sue very generously is sharing her time with us this evening to talk us through some things that we need to be thinking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I just want to let you know that, so in addition to the heart and soul work that I did with Liz, I am a senior associate with Everyday Democracy. It's a national organization, and I've been working for the past couple of decades around the country and in Vermont to bring communities together to talk about and take action on public issues. And I did spend a couple of years with the Addison Central Supervisory Union, and we had a very extensive public engagement process there. We brought people in all seven towns together to have pretty in-depth conversations about the future of their city. And so I'd be happy to tell you about how that went. That's a little bit of a long story for tonight, but I, we learned a lot, and a lot of it went really well. And then there were some lessons we learned about things we do differently. So there's a guy named Bill Grace at the Center for Ethical Leadership, and he always says when he talks to communities, one of the most important questions you can ask is what time is it? So what time is it in the community? And we think about that a lot when we think about engaging community members. Because whatever work, if you do decide to go forward with a study, you're going to do it in the context of what's happening, right, in, in the community. And does this mean we do have the science now? Okay.
Want me to go?
Sure. So one thing that we think about is where citizens are at right now. And as all of you know, this is no news, but trust is probably at an all-time low, right? And we can see from the recent elections, there's just a lot of distrust. You know, people now have more access to information than they've ever had before, and people are starting to really have different expectations about the relationship between leaders and citizens. And as all of you know, people now can organize themselves very quickly and effectively to oppose you or to support you. And people want to have more collegial relationships and less kind of parent-child relationships, which was more typical maybe twenty, thirty, fifty years ago. And then when we think about what context leaders are working in, if you go to the next slide, you know, everywhere you look, there are less public resources, there's increasing conflict with citizens, and leaders as a result have actually become more risk averse. And there's just, it's really a difficult environment to get something significant done. I just want to talk a little bit about what's going on in Essex. I'm doing some work with a group right now in Essex called the Essex Governance Group, and we just did a survey, about four hundred and fifty people answered the survey. And it was not scientific, it was a self-selected group, but it was a group of engaged people, the kinds of people that are going to be paying close attention to the work of this committee. And I just wanted to, just lift up a couple of things that, that came out of that survey. We asked people in that survey, if, if Essex government could improve one thing that they do, what value needs most work? We gave them a list of different things. And transparency came out way above anybody else. I think forty-three percent of all people that answered the survey said, we want to see more transparency. And when they talked about transparency, they also talked about inclusion, taking advantage of the skills and expertise of the people in the community, and really letting everybody know what's going on. People in that survey also talked a lot about communication. They talked about wanting to have more online communication. They talked about wanting officials to be more innovative and how they communicate much more proactive. And then also in the survey, another interesting thing that came out was there was a lot of concerns about leadership. There were many, many comments about how people felt that the interests and agendas of our formal leaders are not always in alignment with the interests of the broader community. So those are really important things to keep in mind when we're moving forward. The other part of the context, that's a little bit of a happier story though, is that the heart and soul of Essex did just spend several years- heart and soul of Essex did just spend several years engaging over a thousand people. And people actually had a really good reaction to that experience. People loved what we did. We identified these core values. I think people are ready to step up and be part of a process, and wouldn't you say so, Liz?
Yeah.
And I think people are looking for, you know, engaging, interesting and fun ways to have, to have a say and to have a voice. So that's on the other side of it. So that's just a little bit of the context, kind of the environment that you would do this work in if you did, were to do a study. The other thing I want to share with you is a slide from the Kennedy School of Government at Harvard. Whoops, there's a, is there one before that?
Where are you talking about?
Okay, did you go back? Okay. So Mark Moore, he's a professor at the Kennedy School of Government and they have been researching what leads to successful community change for decades and they have boiled it down to three things. And they say that every community change effort needs three things for success. They need legitimacy, they need a clearly defined public benefit, and they need operational capacity. And so a really important question for you all to ask yourself is what is it that would give this process legitimacy? And how are we going to know what the publicly defined value is? And then will we have the capacity to carry it out? When I look at the, the public engagement efforts I've been involved with or witnessed, one of the key things that happens that makes it not go well is that the people doing the engagement don't have a clearly defined role for the public in mind. They aren't clear about, they have this sense that we should engage people, but they're not clear what they're asking the public to do. Are they asking the public to just become aware of information? Are they asking them to weigh in? Are they asking them to decide together? So the last slide, Mark, if you could put that up. So this is simplistic and these things all happen together, right? They're not mutually exclusive, but you know, so first we have public evaluation, which is basically you want people to think well of what you're doing, right? And then the next level is public education. For example, if the study committee decided, "We are going to come up with a plan and we're going to present it to people and we want them to know what's in the plan," that would be public education. Public input is when you're asking for ideas. And then the highest level in my view, public engagement, is where you're really working in partnership with the community to come up with solutions together. And so what creates a tremendous amount of distrust is when you're asking people for this level of engagement, but really what you're asking is some education about a proposal that you've already decided on. And that is just something that I've seen over and over and over again and it just creates a lot of bad feeling and distrust and it leaves people to think that there is a lack of transparency. And it's really caused some very, you know, thoughtful, wonderful efforts to not even have a chance. So being very clear in the study committee about what role you're asking the public to play is going to be essential. Given the context, I would really encourage you to think about trying to engage people at those higher levels. I think that you'll serve, you'll serve yourself very well if you start by asking the public what they think. Do your work, come back to them with some options and give them a chance to weigh in. And a really good starting place is with the three questions that you talked about tonight. What are some of the opportunities? What, what do you value about public education here? What are some of the opportunities and what are, what are some of your concerns? The problem happens when a study committee gets ahead of the rest of the community and they talk about those questions and maybe the answers are the same as they were seven years ago. And the thing is that if you spend a lot of time and effort in engaging the community, they're probably going to come up with the three lists that you came up with tonight, but that doesn't matter. That's beside the point. The point is that, that it belongs to them. And then if you come up with proposals that are informed by what the broader community said they wanted, they're going to see their work in it, right? And the other thing that's really important is to think about where are the decision points? Where can people have a say? So if the study committee feels like there are some options or some different ways to approach this, they can go back to the community with a couple of different choices and allow the community to deliberate about what's possible. If the study committee thinks there's only one way to go, then the last thing you want to do is go back to the community and say that you're going to ask them to weigh in. So you have to really be intentional about that. I also would really encourage you, if you do decide to do the study, to form a very diverse steering committee. I know that there are some statutory obligations that you have, but I would really strongly encourage you to have teachers and students and parents on that committee. If you want to engage the community, having a diverse steering committee is one of the most important things you can do. It allows the people on the committee to reach out to their networks and to get a very inclusive group of people. And then the other thing that's just important is to keep telling the story of the work that you're doing and, you know, do it in a conversational way. If you're going to engage people, don't make them come to a meeting like this and sit here in front of a microphone. Have it in a fun place, have some food, make it interesting. And people will show up. We know that from Heart and Soul of Essex. You, you'll be able to get people to the meetings, but what you need to do is give them a good reason to be there. They have to feel like...
And food.
And food. They have to feel like it's meaningful, their voice is going to be heard, it's going to inform the, the decisions that you're making. And then the other mistake that I often see is that sometimes groups do a really fabulous job. They engage people, they, they make decisions based on what people told them, and then they forget to tell people. They forget to draw a line between what they heard and what their recommendations are. And finally, the last thing that I'll say, the general public is not great at technicalities, so don't bring them really technical stuff. What the general public is really good at is talking about their values and what matters to them. And so what they can offer to all of you, if you decide to study this, is they can offer you a broad set of parameters to inform your decision-making. And then it's up to the study committee to hash out some of the technicalities, then go back to the community and draw the line between the values and the specifics of what you've come up with. So I think that's it. If anyone has a question.
So voting to study prior to kind of retrieving those parameters from the town makes me wonder if we get into a question of transparency. And I'm not sure how the order of operations works because clearly when you study, you don't necessarily know what the outcomes are, but you're asking, is this a valid question to ask? But there are, if we go down the study route, there are certain things we're bound to do, right? We must do this if the state says, accepts our study as valid. So how do you, how do you envision this process best engaging our community in a way that doesn't poison our effort at the beginning?
Well, I think that, you know, in Addison Central Supervisory Union where I did some work, I mean, in the end, they decided that they did not have the support of the towns to put forward a red. So the way that they ended their study was saying, "You don't think there's enough support to put this to a vote, but here are five recommendations for how we're going to increase, increase collaboration and work together better." You know, they had a whole bunch of steps and they acknowledged that in a few years, this may come up again and it may need to be studied again. So you can study this without having a foregone conclusion, right? It doesn't mean that if you study it, the outcome is going to be the recommendation that you consolidate.
Okay, well, I should clarify my question. It's more of, is the decision to study without some level of the earlier steps with, with public information, one that could, that, that could create some distrust?
I think it could, especially if the community's under the impression that you're doing this study with an eye towards a particular outcome.
Okay.
I had a question for Sue, but just a comment too to Mark's and it was sort of the conversation we had at Dave's question earlier, is that we did find, as we took this up at our board table, the first thing we did is looked to where it was spoken to in policy that we would be addressing this as a board, the notion of whether or not we would study. And we were able to find several places where it's our responsibility as trustees of our community to be looking forward to opportunities around education and, and, you know, costs that our communities could bear. So we were, we were able to look at it from that vantage point as being if we were to do a community engagement and 20 people were to show up and all saying, "We shouldn't even study this," our community is broader than the number of people that might have shown up to determine whether or not we would study. And we felt a responsibility as a board to have to otherwise defend why we wouldn't study. And I think a couple, I think you even said that, Mark, that, that there's part of it that's in our job description, I think, as board members to, to engage in the question, not the, not at all to have a predisposition around the outcome. And that's how I view the study. One of the questions I had for you, Sue, was the idea of a diverse steering committee within the confines of what I heard from Chris, from Chris, around sort of what needs to comprise our, our study committee if we were to choose to do a study. And so I'm wondering if it's not possible that a, a community engagement steering committee might have representation on the study committee, but be a separate entity that has a bridge, but I'm wondering if those could be two separate groups and still be effective?
I think they could.
Okay, just from a pure logistics standpoint.
As long as they were connected to the steering.
The work and...
You know, Susan Clark, who's doing some work in our town right now, wrote a book called Slow Democracy, and she talks about the three things that you need to have a credible engagement process. You need inclusion, it has to be inclusive. You need deliberation, which means people have to have a chance to really talk about the issues in a meaningful way, and then you need power. People have to have a connection between what you're asking them to do and decision-making. So if you have two separate groups, they just need to be connected and that needs to be clear, if they have a connection to decision-making.
Quick question on the logistics here, perhaps for Chris. It sounded to me though that we have virtual unlimited range of what we could do with this study committee. It has to have one Essex Town Board member on it, one Junction Board member on it, one Westford Board member on it, but beyond that, it could be five people, it could be 100 people, it could be pretty much anything the three boards decide, as long as it meets those absolute minimal characteristics.
And add one, you're, you're correct with one omission and that's just as long as it is closely proportional to, to the three.
It couldn't be 45 Junction people.
Correct.
And a town member and Westford member.
But you could have, I mean, you could have a committee that had 25 people on it.
Yeah.
Or one that had, had seven.
Okay.
Again, depending on what you think is most effective and, and yours.
Another thing that I would say in terms of credibility is that Kim started with talking about the fact that out of the heart and soul process, one of the six core values had to do with education. And if you read what people had to say about that, there's some really clear themes that came up around what people cared about. So one thing that I think would be, give you credibility if you do decide to do this study is to really look at that carefully and try to frame the way you approach the study so that you can use the study to help address some of those things that people said they cared about. And I think you probably would be able to do that.
One thing I want to clarify in terms of process is that the vote to form the study committees should occur at a meeting with all the boards and with the superintendents involved. And at that meeting, you are to establish the budget and fix the number of board members. Study.
So that's different than what you mentioned earlier, right?
It's slight, it's slightly different.
So we, so we may not have the information we need tonight to be able to do that vote?
You could, i- in terms of making it binding and going forward, that's correct. Okay.
And we would need to, versus going back to doing the remainder of the detail in our individual boards, we need to find a common meeting time for another joint meeting.
And the intent of the common meeting time is to be able to have, I think, the dialogue that you've had tonight about that issue as a series of group, uh, boards. And so then if there are concerns that a particular board has, you have the opportunity to iron those out.
And that's in just establishing the study committee, not, we're not talking about articles or any of that.
Correct.
We're talking about...
No, that's just establishing...
Anything that's actionable, we need to come back together as a large group and we need to have the answers to the, the, what we need for funding and what we anticipate to be the structure of the study committee.
Correct. So, you know, tonight, you could say, "There's $40,000 available from the state of Vermont as a grant for this, these types of studies. We'll approve a study committee for the budget not to exceed $40,000. The last study committee, I think, had 16 or 18 board members, members. You could fix that number if you wanted and do that and act tonight." Or tonight, you could take a sense of the boards relative to this issue and come back with a specific proposal that said, "Here's the budget and X amount and a study committee consisting of X number of members."
Could I make a suggestion as well that the boards think long and hard about what specific charge is made to the committee? Last time, the charge that we were given was fairly technically legalistic, i.e. that we shall produce a study according to statute. And while that definitely, as I understand it, has to be done by statute, it would also be very helpful to give further guidance that includes things like a public education process and things like that, if that's intended to be done. Because I know it was not clear that, that, you know, at the time, that that was considered to be part of the study. And so how you charge that study committee does become very relevant.
And Chris, that's within our, the opportunity in charging the committee to be somewhat prescribed and more destructive in the process?
You know, the study committees are legal creatures, you know, on one sense, in the sense that, you know, the statute specifically says, "You formed a study committee to do X." It doesn't mean in the context of either a charge or the people that you asked to be on it, you don't say to them, or even have a joint meeting with the study committee, that you were formed with the hopes of looking at the following things. The only other comment I'd make is that I think a study committee has an obligation to engage in a level of public engagement. And, and part of that engagement, I think, should at some level be inquiry and listening and some level of it should also be leadership and some level of it should be education. The piece that study committees are not supposed to do under the statute is, is that once the study committee has made a decision about what it wants to do, it's not the role of the study committee at that point to, I think earlier David used the word, and I'll, I'll use it again now because I mean it very specifically, it's not the role of the study committee to market the study report. That, that's a, that's a different responsibility. I think it's appropriate for the committee to engage in public engagement and in that context, I think, to both advise, listen, and help lead the community in that, in that entire process.
We're gonna handout, but...
Some of the committee, like the climate one that you were gonna bring.
There's a, I'll just, I will, I'll send them to you to share with the committee, but the, yeah, there's a spectrum of public engagement that's just a one-page thing and it's got a really nice description of the different levels of engagement and what they are. And I think that...
I think they had it and we didn't get that. Thank you. If you don't mind me saying that.
So it sounds like we gotta get together again.
So we might be on next steps ahead of, of, I mean, I'm thinking that we had the opportunity, as we shared earlier, to hear from each other around what we saw as opportunities and what we saw as concerns. And I know at each of our individual boards, we've probably had conversations around this, our sentiment around our obligation to study or not. And so, I mean, we may, we may be okay to have gone ahead and said, say whether or not by vote, if we're gonna study, but it sounds like we're lacking in some of the information we would need to have it be binding. And so I'm not sure that I'm seeing that there's tremendous value in us taking an up or down vote without that and that we probably need to find another joint meeting time and maybe ask Mark and Judy to help us with a little more of the legwork. Because even if we could do the part about, and a budget not to exceed the forty thousand, because I think that might be something that we could agree to do. I think the notion of how we charge a committee and what the committee composition would be is equally, at least from my vantage point, pretty important in how that work would go forward from there. So it seems as though we may have an action. David, you have a question?
Mr. Redd, a question.
Yes, sir.
If we here tonight, the individual boards decided to form a committee, could we then delegate the two superintendents and the appropriate board chairs to get together, to come up with a dollar and the makeup, come back to the individual boards for approval and then authorize the board chairs to get back together and establish it on their own based upon the board, individual boards' discussions at their individual meetings?
I don't think so. I think that the statute really envisions and requires the superintendents meet with the boards and establish the budget and the number of committee members. It, it, I don't think it really provides a mechanism to effectively streamline the process. David?
I was hoping for a yes on that, Chris.
I was hoping for a yes too.
Sorry. Thank you.
Apology, bud.
In between the next time that we meet to work on communication to the public about the possibility of this, that we're looking at this when the next meeting is, and any information we can get out there, I think would be great.
And it seems as though, given the time we've been able to spend on unpacking some of those initial questions and the why of the study and even some of the what of the study, the next meeting might not be quite as long, not that this hasn't been lovely, but, but it, it may be a little bit more action oriented and certainly have plenty of time for engagement as well. But we might be able to be task oriented at the next one and this has been maybe a little bit more discovery, which I think is incredibly valuable because we've done it individually. But like, hearing from each other, for me, has been terrific. So are you folks charging us for working with our superintendents to get the rest of the information and come up with a joint meeting time?
I think that's what we're kind of deciding that, that's what we want them to charge us with.
I know. You guys do. Do we need an action for that, folks, to know whether or not we need an action?
Can I just make a statement to keep the date that we have to, if we decide to go forward with Red District, we've got July one. So if we meet again before we leave here, to me, it'd be a great idea if we have a general idea, are we gonna try to meet within two weeks? I mean, because we're on a timeline. And so I think we've gotta give ourselves some deadlines.
Mm-hmm. Martha?
Well, I, I'm actually confused about the timeline because I think that the timeline that Judy shared with us, hopefully, was a whole year different from the timeline that Chris outlined tonight. And so I'm very confused about the timeline, frankly.
I think the timeline that you saw, or the, you get hit with one that saw, was to put us into a, at the winter. And taking advantage of the tax incentive sooner rather than later. So as we approach the upcoming budget season.
So it's November of two thousand fifteen. We're sitting here right now, right here.
Tax burden.
Ten months.
And then as you try to resolve that, the budget cuts, that will be, it's remarkable to what programs our kids face losing. I'd put it on a faster timeline to preserve the quality that currently exists within our current structure. I'm really concerned about delaying as far as any recommendation that Mark and I would bring forward. I think it would be within the forty thousand dollars that the state would allow us to study. It would stay within those confines. And I would need to hear, I'm not sure if Mark would, but I, I would need to hear from the boards now before you adjourn, what you want for a study committee. I think Sue made a great recommendation of what composition that could be. I would include in that community members that don't have children in our schools as well in that composition. And I would need to Brian and say, what's an effective number of a committee to do the study? You know, when has it become too many people to be effective? But I'm, I'm not sure how I could inform you differently tonight than I would as we re-warn another meeting. So just so that you know, from one superintendent's perspective, that's what I would be thinking about. I need you to tell me what you want for representation versus the other.
Yeah, I'd like to hear a bit from Brian and, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, who was on the committee last time, just, just, that was a reference that we have, was however many people were on that and just how did that work in terms of the number of people? Was it bad? What was the, you know, quick stuff?
Yeah, I would just offer that, we had sixteen people on the committee and you had four staff members, basically, that provided that resource from across the two districts at the time, two districts. It was certainly manageable. I think Sue's comments about the various, the diversity of that committee is a little bit of a challenge when you're talking about what Chris has talked about in terms of proportionality being acknowledged and, and respected. But in terms of ensuring that, it's easier when you've got one catchment area that you're just saying, okay, so this is one community, so we can have, make sure we've got good gender balance, that we've got people who have parents, that are parents with kids in school. Do you have, do you wanna make sure you bring in parents who have a newer population of kids going through the school system, as well as parents who have had kids graduating from the system? Student voice, is that gonna be an Essex Town rep? Is that gonna be an Essex Junction rep? Is that gonna be a Westford rep? Is that where people are gonna choose to put? Or how do you do that collectively? Do you have that diversity? Or I think the, the question that was posed to Sue in terms of, do you have another connecting committee? And when Judy and I had an initial conversation about this, the issue around community engagement, I think is a huge part to this. The issue for me is how do you gain that engagement when you've got a group that's got a legal task to carry out? And how much input versus education versus engagement are you gonna do? And being really clear about that. You know, one of the things that struck me in terms of Chris's opening comments, that I was taken with, with the Chittenden East final document was the preamble, where it was very clear what those communities were trying to create. And whether or not you are at that point where collectively you are really clear about what you're trying to create and why. And is that the element of the community engagement? And is, is that somewhat distinctive in terms of the difference between the thirteen articles that need to be formed for voters to eventually make some decisions about? But what you wanna do, I think, is to not save that community conversation for the end product to then be shared. You wanna have an opportunity for people to get involved earlier. And I do think that that voice of the multiple constituent groups is an important one. I'm not sure if you're gonna be able to get that as nice and deeply packaged up when you're having representatives from multiple communities.
One suggestion, this is what happened in Addison Central, one thing that you could do is you could have the study committee that's charged with the articles and that formal stuff. But you could have small organizing, informal organizing committees in the village and the town in Westford, whose charge is to bring people together for neighborhood conversations in each of the communities. And so that's another structure that might work. And then again, they just need to have a well-defined connection with the study committee and a commitment from the study committee that what they're hearing is going to inform the discussion. I just also wanna pick up on what you were saying about just doing that as close to the beginning of the process as you can, so that you can, you have a lot of technical work you have to do and to be able to have that be informed by the kind of broad desires of the communities at the beginning, rather than doing a lot of work, being very invested in what you've come up with, presenting it to the community and trying to get them to kind of sign off on it at the end. I think that's where things can really fall apart.
Well, I think one thing that would be helpful if we're all gonna meet again is when we publicize that meeting, I mean, two weeks, whenever it is, is to really aggressively invite the public to that meeting and say, we're gonna be forming a committee.
All due respect, that, that, the problem is that you're not, this kind of forum with the microphones and all of you amazing people who are willing to volunteer all of your time, you're a very small percentage of the population. So if you want the public to weigh in, this really isn't a great format for that. So I would really consider doing something very different. Make it a party and have it somewhere where people like to be.
Another part of our original, that originally Unifying the Community Committee, which I myself am pleased to be a part of, was the number sixteen, I thought was very good. And we had a very high attendance rate. I mean, people were very engaged in that process. The other thing is, as you discussed with the inter community of your articles, you're working in subgroups, so you need at least sixteen people to be able to do that because you're, you're starting to study some of the more specifics of what you're gonna present in that. The other part is throughout the process, there were warned meetings, just like your school board meetings. So there were different times where we had people come to educate us on different parts of the process. And those were always open to the community. Sometimes it was just our sixteen people that were there. But we had quite a few hot topics where public did come and were very engaged in it, especially in the questioning. So it's not just those committee members that are part of that. And, and we did take the public engagement part of the process very seriously and put a lot of time and effort into that and trying to present. And I think we probably spent a lot more time on public education because that's where we felt like we were before a vote and that that was where a lot of time went into it. But you know, you will get a variety of people that wanna participate in the process and, you know, trying to make that diverse, I think is very important.
My personal feeling is a lot of ways that doing it the other way around from what we did it before is get groups of people together in all three communities, talking about what is our way forward for our schools. I think anybody who's paying any attention realizes we have some very real challenges. Start that conversation first. Out of that conversation then, you're going to identify even your ID value belongs at the committee. We could then run a very abbreviated study because we already have had the input from all the community members as to what the community sees as going, as a, as a path forward. Because a lot of the decisions, we had to kind of make based on our own, you know, sixteen, twenty people take on things. We didn't really have a lot of input. You know, there were input on specific issues, but not in the broader sense that the heart and soul had been trying to get to. And so, you know, if we do it the same way we did last time and form a committee and go down the path again, are we gonna head for the same approach? Or do we try and do it in a substantially totally different way than we did the last time? And get the consensus first, so that people feel vested, so they pay attention to what's happening during the study committee. And then it's not a shock when the, when the study comes out. Which I think for relatively large portions of the community, the overall proposal was new to them. And it also happened at a time when, we're talking town and junction vote, that kind of preempted us, which did not help matters. Now we're in a little, we're in a war with town and junction.
Just, just while we're talking about the magic number sixteen, while I'm trying to wrap my head around, Essex Town had eight on it, Essex Junction had six, and Westford had two. I imagine that's a bit of a issue for Westford with two to capture diversity. Was eight appropriate for the junction and town to capture diversity for those that were here and a part of that? Eight you were able, you felt you were able to get?
Well, I think the better question is, what does the link to the census say about what?
Yes, the population might have changed, but. But the committee, the study committee's not based on population, it's students. It's based on students, not population.
And Essex is growing and Westford's shrinking.
Do we know, do we know, do we have the information to know our proportions? That we could say sixteen and it's gonna be divided in this way? My feeling is that we keep getting to a place where we may not have all the information. And I'd rather we do it well.
Yes, please.
And get it right. And this isn't about what our outcome will be, but whether or not we're going to study. I'm hearing consensus and maybe that's something we can share here. Can we check consensus on whether or not we wanna study? And then can we ask our superintendents to help us? I, I think it'd also be information that would be, I'd be interested in knowing what was successful in Chittenden East since they've gone through it more successfully, rather than saying we had sixteen. We're not exactly sure how that divides up. And I, I'd be curious about that piece of it. So from my standpoint, you can do whatever, Michael, but I know it's ten.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm in favor of just like a straw poll.
Well, but the, go on, Scott was saying that the number is very critical because even two, I think, is too little for Westford to get the diversity, the various groups you wanna have. So if Westford has three, does that mean we have to have a committee of, you know, thirty? This is, well, it's by population.
Scott, I'm interested now in that. For us to get diverse, diversity. Who's the numbers up with the others? So you might, I don't know what the mechanics are there.
Well, your, your point is well-taken that eight might not accurately represent the larger communities either. So we, I think finding the bridge to a diverse, a diverse representation on engagement definitely needs to happen. That's why I was asking that question earlier, because it feels like to have an effective committee to get through the technicalities, we have to have that and separately probably a diverse representation to get to inform the work of the committee as well as educate out. So we need a, we need a loop that happens that isn't probably gonna be achieved in sixteen people or sixty people. We gotta do it a little differently, I think.
Kim, I just want to suggest two things. One, you were talking about consensus. You wanna get some, some sense, and look at it that way, some sense that we find. Relative to the second thing, I think that I'd recommend that you ask the two superintendents and the three chairs to meet, to look at the, what's the budget need to be? And then secondly, to come back with a recommendation on the size of the committee with a little rationale. And then I think candidly, you need to post that for, for a meeting of the, of the boards with a specific action that's, that's being proposed to be taken rather than discussion. And, and let the board members know in advance what the recommendation is relative to both the budget and the, and the size. And maybe provide some background information as you might. You know, for example, the study committee will look at, if they look at board representation, they'll look at different scenarios. So if we have a, a board that has eleven people, was, you know, what does that break out to? Sixteen, how does that break out to? If we have twenty-two, what does that break out to? And be able to, to help inform people about that.
Do we need an action or a motion to, to charge folks to do what you're saying? Or can we just? Or can we just take that as our job? Do we need any action, right?
I think you can take that as your job.
Can I ask another question, Chris?
Yeah.
Think another disparity, numbers between Westford and the other two districts. What would your opinion be of Westford having twice the number with each member having half a vote equivalent so that they could get more diversity?
You know, David, it's not addressed at all in the statute. And, you know, conceivably, you could do it. I, I think the difference is that, you know, my sense is that the intent of the study committee is to sort of be a level of public engagement. And each person there has sort of a vote in that context. It, it doesn't mean that it, I mean, there's nothing in the statutes that prohibits it, but there's absolutely nothing that authorizes it. You know, my sense is, personally, I don't, I don't think it's a great idea, but it's not specifically prohibited.
I'm interested perhaps seeing a, I don't know exactly how we do it. Do we have some consensus on if we want to, can we do a thumbs up or thumbs down? Like, I'm pretty informal on that, but do you tell me what would be okay, folks, if we would?
Why don't you call our board first, Mike? Ask us thumbs up or thumbs down?
Yeah.
And the question is whether or not we are interested in studying?
Yes, yes. Presidential Committee, are you interested in studying?
Based on the information we get.
Yes. Thumbs up?
Yeah.
All right, we're good.
A September, are we interested in studying on the information we have? Thumbs up.
Uh, Westford Board, are you interested in studying? So I think. A two, a two up, a two down, and one even, or I don't know.
Mine could change.
So Sue said something very important, I think, for Westford. What time is it in our community? And, and I, I don't know if our board has the answer to that. We're engaging in a year-long visioning process right now that's going to culminate in the end of January. We are engaged in a sustainability committee process that is ending now as to what all possible options are to our school. We're engaged in pretty contentious discussions around property taxes. What's the time in our community? Will this get, will this, will this, will those, will those questions convolute this discussion? And I think that's where we need to understand our own, our own goals and support.
And, and I've just struggled with what, what comes first. You know, I, I, we have a community that voted 650 to 40 last time. You know, so I keep going back and forth between, God, we can't. We have to engage our community before we say we're going forward with the study. But then I kept listening to Kim and thinking, we can't not go forward with the study because, in my opinion, it's our only financial hope. But I don't think our community understands that yet. And so that's the circle that I'm going in.
So if the chairs were able to come up with a date to jointly meet again, it might provide even opportunity in there for an engagement opportunity, either in our individual communities, if that were felt necessary. Especially it sounds in Westford, you might like to know whether or not the community is feeling up for the study, it sounds.
In the very short term, we will see that, we will receive the report from our sustainability, Sustainability Committee, and we will have our first look at budget with tax impact. That will be.
Form the discussion.
That will be the trigger. That gives us a very clear indication. And that's weeks. We'll have that within a couple of weeks. January or December 3rd?
3rd.
1st? December 1st?
So with holidays in there, it seems as though if, if it's okay with you guys, the three of us will find a common meeting date. We'll meet with Mark and Judy and come up with a date that we can meet certain and more information to inform the details that we need to have to be able to vote to either study or not study more formally than our thumbs up or thumbs down.
Right.
Do we need independent motions to adjourn or is there anything else?
You can call.
Can we all call us out of this meeting?